Good evening, welcome to tonight's city council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order, ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Ford?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bullock?
Here.
Councilman Amador?
Present.
Councilman Teeter?
Here.
Councilwoman Carson?
Present.
Councilwoman Benson?
Here.
Councilwoman McAldowney?
Here.
Councilwoman Elliott?
Present.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And before we stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance, I'd like to ask you all to keep in your prayers the little girl that was hit by a car on Bell Creek Boulevard. She seems to be like she's gonna be okay. She's got some bruises and road rash, but apparently she was running across the street to see Santa Claus that was at the neighbors. And it could've been a tragic situation in our community. Thankfully, she seems like she's gonna be okay, but I'm sure the family is pretty shaken up. So with that, please stand and join me for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. [Music] A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first item of business, the city attorney has a new assistant city attorney he'd like to introduce to the council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This time, it gives me pleasure to introduce to you Robert Cheesely, who was recently joined the city attorney's office as senior assistant city attorney, and I'll ask him to join me here at the podium to introduce himself and give you a little quick background. Great, thanks Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name's Robert Cheesely. I'm extremely excited to have joined Commerce City City Attorney's Office here. It's a very exciting opportunity. I practiced law for about nine years in Jacksonville, Florida, and New Orleans, Louisiana. Most recently, I handled contracts and procurement for the city attorney in New Orleans before relocating to Colorado with my wife, so thank you very much.
Absolutely. You know, from this council, with the leadership of Bob, we know you're gonna do just fine. We're glad to have you aboard. Just wanna make sure you know what you're getting into.
I've been here for two months, and I'm just coming tomorrow.
Oh, it'll get better, trust me. Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Benson?
You know, I was just gonna say, I think you're gonna find that it's a lot easier practicing law in Colorado than in Louisiana.
I have nothing but trust.
Where you're dealing with your Napoleonic code.
Yes, it's far more similar to what I was used to in Florida, so thank you.
Thanks. Now, I'd like to invite the audience to introduce themselves. Staff will go around and pass around a microphone.
Casey.
Erin Federico.
This is Jordan, I'm Nikki Pearson, and Ty.
I'm April Combs.
Leah Madrid.
Leah Harris.
Sheila Harris and Sarah Oberbeck.
Esther Hall with the Commerce City Historical Society.
Danny Thomas.
Betty Thomas.
Eva.
Eva.
Mary Sturken.
Paula Ortega.
Laura Ortega.
Jaco Nigui Torres.
Oboagiru.
Nora Torres.
Jossen Nagui.
Tawana.
Mike Rogers.
Sarah Phillips.
Jody Dawson.
Alessandra Maestas.
Ruhenio Maestas.
Pat Almeda.
Liliana Paseos.
Karla Rivas.
Monica Rodriguez.
Michael Wado.
Jerre Sanchez.
Daryl Zarin.
Renee Doten, mother of an artist.
Renee Zarin.
Or, Demae.
Lisa Holloway.
Elvis.
Davy Crow.
Ricardo Ortiz.
Maria DeAndre, Public Works.
Cheryl Carstens, Finance.
Carolyn Keith, Parks and Recreation.
Troy Whitmore, United Power and Metro North Chamber.
Jeffrey Bollot, Commerce City Historical Society and Commerce City Cultural Council.
Heidi McNeely, Commerce City Cultural Council.
Susan Carver-Hall, Commerce City Cultural Council.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Thanks again for being here this evening. We're gonna start off with the recognitions, and that'll be the Cultural Council Art Show Award winners. So I'd like to invite Heidi McNeely forward to present the awards to the art show winners.
Great, thank you so much. I'm gonna turn a little bit, so I don't have my back to the audience. Thank you for all of you guys who are able to stick it out with us. For those of you that were not here for the art show presentation earlier, prior to the meeting out in the foyer, we are the Commerce City Cultural Council, and we are sponsoring the Adams 14 School Art Contest. It will be on display, all of the artwork will be here until January 17th, for those of you that haven't had a chance to look through it, and please let others know that it is here so that they can come and enjoy it as well. So, I know several of the students who created art this evening were not able to stay for the entire presentation, so we may not have all of our winners present, but hopefully we have some of you that are here. So we are going to award one winner for every school that entered, and one Best of Show. If we call your name, if you don't mind, please come forward, we'll give you a certificate and a prize, and then have you line up on the stage, so that we can have a photograph with the city council afterwards. Okay, so from Alsup Elementary School is Alicia Mercado here. Yay, Alicia. From Central Elementary School, Zach Martinez. From Dupont Elementary School, Demarias Sierra. From Hanson Elementary School, Danella Prieto Ortiz. From Kemp Elementary School, Areli Ceballos. From Monaco Elementary School, Marlene Rios Rodriguez. From Rose Hill Elementary School, Anna Pacheco. From Kearney Middle School, Mariana Guevara Galvin. Okay, a few more left. From Adams City Middle School, Alejandra Hernandez. From Adams City High School, Vanna Knight.
I'm sure they're all at home doing artwork right now.
That's right. I hope so, making their pieces for next year already, huh? Okay, and our Best of Show this evening goes to Cordes Thomas. All right, well, no winner stuck around with us, but we would like to thank all of you for your wonderful art entries. We will have them, like I mentioned, here. Please let your other students and friends know that if there are workers here, that they can come and share it with their families and friends. And again, thank you all for participating tonight, and thank you to city council for helping us put on this event this evening.
Well, thank you to the teachers, and the students, and the cultural council, and the two members of the city council that serve on the cultural council, Councilwoman Carson and Councilwoman Elliott. You know, we need this public art in our community, and we're pushing harder to see more public art in more places, and the artwork out in the hallway is just tremendous, so thank you to everyone who participated.
Thanks.
Okay, now we'll move into citizen communication. When I call your name, please come up, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to talk to the city council. We'll start with Troy Whitmore. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's great to be here. Troy Whitmore, 16155 Elektra Street, Brighton 80603, and I'm here wearing my Metro North Chamber of Commerce hat this evening. I'm the incoming chair of the Metro North Chamber of Commerce, and it was going to be my pleasure to introduce Angela Haben, our new CEO, to those of you who have not been able to meet her. I know some of you have, at some of our events. Unfortunately, at about 5:15, she said she was having an argument with her clicker on her Honda, and it did not work out so well. The alarm kept going off and locked her out. So unfortunately for you guys, you get to listen to me for three minutes, instead of her for two forty-five. Hopefully, though, Angela will be able to join you for an official introduction right after the first of the year, Mr. Mayor and council members. I just wanted to say that we have, on the leadership side of the chamber, have enjoyed our relationship with Commerce City, and hope that we can count on you to be active members in the future. Brian McBroom has been on our board of directors, and been a great contributor to the Chamber of Commerce. I do see a number of your council members at our events, and we appreciate that. I see Mr. Teeter a lot, Mr. Douglas almost every time, Mr. Bullock often, and some of the rest of you, and others I work with, like Jason, I saw him twice last week at other events. So we have a pretty good relationship with this city. I did want you to know that you have twenty-eight business members of the chamber that are Commerce City businesses. And recently, we had two events here to kick off the initiation of two new businesses in your area, in the medical field, and that was well attended, from what I understand. We do look for you to help us out with your enrollment and your sponsorships, and hope that you can help us with our economic development programs, our governmental relations programs, and our educational programs that I think are of value to this area. And I think Metro North does a great job in providing those kind of venues, and works hand-in-hand with other chambers of commerce. We're not in competition with the Commerce City Business and Professional Organization or the Brighton Chamber, we work together. And with that thought in mind, we'd like to urge you to work with us in the future. We'd love to have an event here, in this building, if that works, like we did several years ago. I know we've bantered about a couple of topics that may not work for the city. Jason and I talked about that just a few days ago, about what might be a good fit for you and your members, your twenty-eight members that are nearby, and that could provide a service. So we've had a couple ideas in the works, and we'd love to have an event here, and we just ask that you consider re-upping your chamber membership to help with the costs of putting on these organizational events and these educational events. So again, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the time. Thank you, council members, and everybody else on staff, like Jim and Brian, that have been participatory in our events. You're very important to us, and again, we just hope that you'll stick with us, and help us, under our new leadership, to grow our programs to the benefit of the city, and obviously to your twenty-eight members, and hopefully, a lot more. So thank you for your time. Oh, one final note. I really hate that the border for United Power and Public Service Company of Colorado, excuse me, Excel, is this far to the south. Your lights are gorgeous. They are beautiful, so kudos to your public works department, and to those folks that have done the decorating. I'm just a little envious that those meters aren't spinning in United Powers instead. They are for Excel, so, but beautiful job, thank you.
And Troy, before you leave?
Yes?
You know, we've had a great relationship with the chamber for many years. Many of us had the opportunity to meet the new director at the First Choice Emergency Center opening the other day. So we will be having our winter retreat coming up here in the next couple of weeks, and I'm sure we can discuss our direction as we move forward as to our partnership with the chamber.
I do appreciate that, and certainly, if you have any questions from her, or me, or anybody else on the leadership, give us a call.
Okay, thanks for coming in tonight.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Troy.
All right, next we have Casey Pearson. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Casey Pearson, and my address is 17210 East 110th Avenue, Commerce City, Colorado, 80022. And I have written a letter because I am worried about the traffic around Turnberry Elementary. Hello, council, my name is Casey, and I am a third grade student in Ms. Federico's class at Turnberry Elementary. I am here tonight because I share your concern for the safety of the people that live and go to school in this community. My classmate wants to make sure everyone gets to school safely. There have been several accidents around the Turnberry neighborhood. The streets near our school are very busy with kids trying to get to school each day. There have been too many car accidents. There was a car accident a few weeks ago, and it looked pretty bad. I've seen most of the accidents off 104th and Potomac Street. It was very scary to see that sad accident. I think a stoplight would help drivers be more cautious. Whatever you can do to help our Turnberry students and family get to school safely will help. Sincerely, Casey, and to thank the students from Ms. Federico's classroom.
Great, Casey, I wanna thank you for coming in this evening. It takes a lot of guts to get up, at your age, to come before our city council and to talk to us about issues in the community. And just so that you know, we are all very aware of the issues that surround 104th and Potomac Street. We know there's been several accidents, and we have our police department, our police chief has been doing some investigating on that intersection, as well as our city staff. They have to do what they call warrants, and so they're looking in to see if that meets the warrants for us to be able to install a street light, traffic signal at that location. And I would turn it over to Mr. McBroom as to where we are with getting that traffic signal in place. Mr. McBroom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was a community meeting a couple of weeks ago that discussed alternatives. It appears as if the intersection does meet warrants. We're planning a study session with city council on January 26th to explore traffic signal options and funding mechanisms. But it looks like it does meet warrants for a signal now, it's just a question of the best way to go about installing one.
Okay, so we're in the process of getting that done, and you can stay updated by watching the c3gov.com, the website for the city, and we'll keep you up to date. If you look at that website as to where we're at with the traffic signal, and usually you see a lot of that in the city manager's report. But you did hear me at the beginning of the meeting, talk about the little girl that got hit by a car in Bell Creek.
Yes.
Okay, and I have to tell you that we have crosswalks at certain areas, and that signals bad from a driving perspective. But I think it's really important that you help lead your friends and colleagues there at Turnberry Elementary School to be safe around traffic and around the crossing, and make sure that you look out for each other, okay? Because we don't want anybody to get hurt in our community, all right?
All right.
Thank you very much for coming in tonight. Thank you. Thank you so much. And you did a good job. All right, we'll move into, uh, Chief? You're gonna talk to that young lady. Don't give her a ticket. All right, we'll go into approval of the minutes. We have October 6, 2014, I need a motion to approve those minutes. Mr. McAldowney?
So moved.
Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve the October 6, 2014 minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now we need to take up the October 13, 2014 minutes. Mr. McAldowney?
Move to approve the special meeting minutes of October 13.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock.
Second.
I have a motion of second to take care of those minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of the council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are six items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council wish to remove any of these items? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Mr. McAldowney?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion of second, will the attorney please read the title?
Title of ordinance 2038 reads as follows, "An ordinance repealing paragraph E and amending paragraph F of section 12-5005 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code pertaining to restricted and prohibited solicitations." Title of ordinance 2039 reads as follows, "An ordinance amending the 2014 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by increasing the original budgeted revenues in the general fund by $9 million for the recognition of the additional 1% sales tax increase approved by voters, and transferring $323,000 from the general fund to the CIPP fund for the municipal service center MSC Building B renovation and the expenditure thereof."
Okay, and I have to tell you that we have crosswalks at certain areas and that signals bad from a driving perspective. But I think it's really important that you help lead your friends and colleagues there at Turnberry Elementary School to be safe around traffic and around the crossing, and make sure that you look out for each other, okay? Because we don't want anybody to get hurt in our community, all right?
All right.
Thank you very much for coming in tonight.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And you did a good job. All right, we'll move into, uh, Chief? You're gonna go talk to that young lady. Don't give her a ticket. All right, we'll go into approval of the minutes. We have October 6, 2014. I need a motion to approve those minutes. Mr. McAldoney?
So moved.
Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve the October 6, 2014 minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now we need to take up the October 13, 2014 minutes. Mr. McAldoney?
Moved to approve the special meeting minutes of October 13.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock.
Second.
I have a motion of second to take care of those minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of the council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are six items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council wish to remove any of these items? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Mr. McAldoney?
Mr. Mayor, moved to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion of second. Will the attorney please read the title?
Title of ordinance 2038 reads as follows. An ordinance repealing paragraph E and amending paragraph F of section 12-5005 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code pertaining to restricted and prohibited solicitations. Title of ordinance 2039 reads as follows. An ordinance amending the 2014 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by increasing the original budgeted revenues in the general fund by $9 million for the recognition of the additional 1% sales tax increase approved by voters and transferring $323,000 from the general fund to the CIPP fund for the Municipal Service Center MSC Building B renovation and the expenditure thereof. Title of resolution 2014-110, resolution concurring with the Colorado Department of Transportation related to abandonment of State Highway 2, responsible acceleration of maintenance and partnerships ramp program. Title of resolution 2014-118, resolution canceling city council regular meetings that fall on officially scheduled city holidays. Title of resolution 2014-119, resolution approving a contract extension and contract modifications between the City of Commerce City and Waste Management of Colorado, Inc. for residential garbage and recycling services. Title of resolution 2014-120, resolution approving the grant of right-of-way for East 101st Way in Buckley Ranch. That's the consent agenda.
Thank you, I have a motion of second. The title's been read, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show that we have a unanimous decision by the City Council tonight on the consent agenda. Now we move into ordinances on first reading. We have ordinance 2037. Need to ask if anyone on the council has any questions regarding this ordinance. Saying none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council concerning ordinance 2037? Saying none, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Boat?
Moved to introduce ordinance 2037. Council seated.
Thank you, Mr. McAldoney.
Second.
I have a motion of second to introduce ordinance 2037. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title of ordinance 2037 reads as follows. An ordinance adopting the City of Commerce City Public Art Funding Program.
Thank you. I have a motion of second. Title's been read, and I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, please. For the record, ordinance 2037 has been introduced unanimously by the council this evening. We'll move on to ordinance 2040. Is there anyone on council that have any questions regarding this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this ordinance? Saying no one, I'm open for a motion. Mr. McAldoney?
Mr. Mayor, moved to approve ordinance 2040.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title reads, an ordinance amending the 2015 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by appropriating a portion of the unencumbered fund balance of the general fund in the amount of $80,000 for the annual appropriation to the Boys and Girls Clubs of Metro Denver, Inc., and the expenditure thereof.
Thank you, I have a motion of second. Title's been read, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. For the record, ordinance 2040's been introduced this evening unanimously by the City Council. I will move into the executive session portion of our meeting. I need a motion to enter into the executive session. Mr. Bullock?
Moved to, I submit to move into executive session 14-72, an executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402-4FL for the purpose of reviewing the City Managers', Part One of the City Managers' Performance Valuation.
I think that's an i, is it not?
Okay.
4fi?
It's actually a Roman numeral.
One.
One, okay.
All right, just for the record, I wanted to make sure. So I have a motion, Mr. McAldoney?
Second.
I have a motion of second to go into the executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We're going to be in executive session for a little while. I just wanted to thank the audience for showing up tonight and coming out. It was a great evening having the art show, and thank you to the young lady. Keep an eye on your siblings there, make sure that they don't get hurt. Be safe. You did a great job tonight, by the way. I did not do the copy, but I will. I have not seen the letter, but I'm sure the staff has the letter, so I will ask them for it. Now, you see what happens when you come and get to speak? And you get little surprises. So next, if the next council leader, have your mom bring you back and come up and talk about what you've got for Christmas, we give you surprises, okay?
Thanks for bringing him tonight.
Okay, so we are fifteen minutes away from being done.
You there?
These three things are so consilting on each one of those.
All right, I'm gonna call the city council meeting back to order. I see Guillermo in the audience, thanks for being here Guillermo. We're gonna move into the administrative council business portion of the meeting. Mr. Gayle, does anybody have any administrative council business this evening on the council? Mr. Douglas?
Yeah, just a second. I do, hang on.
Go right ahead. Oh, bring it up, all right. Anyone else, administrative council business? Andrew?
In the audience.
All right, let me go through with the council first. Andrew, did you have an administrative council item?
I did, so in previous years past, there was a football game between the police department and the community? Or can you elaborate a little bit about that? And I'm just trying to gather information on if it would be feasible or possible to try to bring that back? Or what happened to that?
The best thing for me to do, Mr. Amador, would be to do a little research. I know Mr. Benson's mentioned it, I don't have much direct knowledge of it. be a way to talk about the possibility of bringing it back.
Very good, so I guess I'd like to just ask to put that on the agenda and then someone has to second that, correct?
Wouldn't hurt.
Just make a directive to...
A directive for staff to investigate it and bring back information concerning it. Can you make that motion now if you'd like?
Yeah, yes, that would be a so move.
All right, is there a second? Second? All right, I have a motion and a second from Mr. Bullock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Can we have some discussion?
You want a discussion?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Benson?
I'm certainly for that, but the only time that I know that it's occurred is in 2010, and it was organized by the police department. And I guess my personal interest in it is that I'm running out of time. If I'm gonna play in it, I haven't got too many more years where I can do that. I would like to have one of those games, because it's an easy form of flight football. It's not the knock-down type of flight, I guess they just don't do that anymore, but it's designed to prevent injury, which is good, but that's just something that hasn't happened for four years now. And it was against the high school football team. I think we won 22 to 14. We have some good athletes in the police department, and I would certainly go on with everything that Mr. Amador has said, we need to get that done again. And we need to publicize it a little bit more so that we get some people, it was a charitable, a charity event, to raise money for certain charities, get some people out there to help raise money for charity. I think that was one reason why they didn't do it again, was because it didn't really raise any money, because there weren't that many people there. I think it just needs to be publicized a little bit more, and I think there will be a lot of people that would come out just to see me get knocked down, you know? You would too. Yeah, I pulled both groin muscles before the game started.
All right. Any other discussion? No other discussion? All right, I have a motion, a second, on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Any other, Mr. Douglas, you ready with yours?
Yes, sir, thank you. On Friday, I attended the Winterfest, and I noticed the cars down there were just out of being the traffic speed limit. People were going in and out of high-low at a very fast pace, we had a lot of pedestrians walking, and I'm not sure with the lighting or so, or it's not like the streets are that wide, everybody's parking just fine, it's just the people were speeding through that area there, even though it's a four-way stop. If we could do a traffic study down there, just to see how the speed limits are. And then also, unfortunately, I met a lot of people in our city that are homeless, and maybe we could look at, I know we don't have any hotels or so, or any kind of shelter area, but look at some sort of voucher for the homeless, and maybe that's something we can bring up at winter retreat, but it was sad to see so many people out there that are homeless, that live in our city, and many adults I've met that had children there that, you know, had a hard time finding a place for them to stay and all, and that also has to do with their school districts and all too, so that would be great to see if we could work some sort of voucher system for our homeless. Thank you.
Mr. McAdonick?
I had another subject, if, Mr. Douglas, your side, or were you looking for feedback? Okay. We had our legislative gathering, our dinner with our elected officials stating, the state elected officials here this last week, and one of the things that occurred to me is I was, both arriving and leaving the facility at Buffalo Run, and I don't know why it struck me particularly that night, is how dark the periphery of that lot is. I look at the area in particular where staff parks closer to the park, near the pavilion, and it's absolutely pitch black. You could have a dozen, two dozen, three dozen people lurking in those shadows, and you'd never know it. I think about our recent review of the golf strategic plans, and to me, that lighting is a critical consideration for us to look at in terms of creating a more welcoming environment, particularly to help bolster our evening attendance at our eating establishment. Certainly, it doesn't necessarily matter from a golf perspective, but from all other uses of that facility, A, our golf course is sort of hidden down 112th, so folks that are new or not familiar with the area have difficulty finding it, and then you get to that location, and even as you're pulling up on it with the limited lighting, you can't quite tell that the facility is open. And so I think there are really two, well, three things I think that come to mind. One, we need to look at effectively lighting that lot in the same way that we would require any establishment to be lit. If I look at any of our retailers that have come in, there are very different caliber of lighting present in each of those locations. The second, again, the visibility at night of the facility, the awareness that that facility exists down 112th, particularly with 112th not built out, you don't know it's there. And while we've made some great improvements on the sightlines as you're trying to leave 112th onto a tower, I'm sorry, chambers, I think it's still really not sufficient. And I know we have 112th that will address that intersection over time, but I think we have to be cognizant of the visibility there, and I don't know if we could even look at doing some sort of a D cell lane, turn lane into, onto 112th to help with that, but I heard from two of our legislators that both of them had difficulty finding that spot, and they've been there before. So, again, periphery lighting, the visibility and safety of that intersection, and I think the third is just the awareness that the facility exists back there. Obviously, we've added signage, but it's closer to Landmark, or, what's the name of the road? Heartland, thank you. Heartland, we don't have signage right there at 112th, and I think that's probably the other piece of the puzzle in terms of visibility and awareness of that location, so I just wanted to bring those things forward while they were still fresh in my mind from last week, and would welcome thoughts from council in terms of directing staff on any of those.
You are right, those areas need to be addressed.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas, your light's on?
I had a question, just to what Jason was saying, and just throughout our neighborhoods, is it the city's responsibility to request additional lighting within a neighborhood, or is that something with the developer? I mean, even if the development that's already done?
As far as I know, the city has no specific street lighting standards within neighborhoods. I think it varies from neighborhood to neighborhood.
Okay. A lot of those are HOA, Steve.
All right, so if the lights are out in neighborhood, that's, you know, within United Power within?
Typically, yes.
Okay, all right.
I can add just real quick, and obviously, a couple of topics, so on the HOA, on the lighting in the neighborhoods, there are light poles that are the power company, and there are light poles that are the HOA, and they're marked, so if the light pole has the little yellow badge and it says HOA, it's a light pole that needs to be addressed through the HOA. And I know that, for example, with our reunion metro district, there's actually a lighting concerns option on the website, but just like our city lights, any of the other lights that aren't marked HOA are the responsibility of the electric provider in that area.
Hold on a second, Mr. Benson's next.
You know, one other thing that I noticed during our meeting last, was it last Thursday? The legislative meeting?
Thursday.
You know, when we're only gonna occupy half of that area, there are other people in there, and it was hard to hear what was going on because of the noise coming from the other side, and I'm thinking that there's gotta be some kind of a, I don't know what you'd call it, a...
Partition?
A partition.
That's what you call it.
That's good, that's good. Some sort of a sound-absorbing partition that we might be able to invest in to cut down on a lot of that noise, you know, maybe one that's ten feet high or something that would stop the noise, although it's gonna go up and seal it and bounce back down, but up. So I would move that we ask the staff to look into that.
All right, I have a motion. Is there a second? Mr. McAdonick?
I would second, so long as the motion includes the three items that I raised, as well as Mr. Benson's suggested partition, that actually is one that I meant to speak to as well, so I thank you for bringing that up. I think that's been something I've seen a couple times, so second.
All right, Mr. Benson, are you acceptable with adding the other two? The lights?
Yes, although I need to, I need to have these on in order to hear what's...
All right.
I will be okay with that.
Mr. McBride?
Certainly, we have no objection to those items and agree, they're worthy of us spending some time on. We are contemplating a renovation project, mostly on the interior to the clubhouse, that would be pulled together during 2015 and likely funded in the 2016 budget. It would be ideal if these items could be included as part of that process, and we just make that a bit of a larger project. It would mean that it wouldn't be addressed until 16, but just wondering if that would be acceptable.
You know, on that note, Brian, what I would say is, I don't think that that's a bad idea, however, I think in the meantime, there can be some kind of a temporary, even if it's some kind of a movable partition, that it could at least help, when you have events there that half that restaurant's open, that would help buffer some of that noise, and then look at more of a permanent type scenario for separating space, at least that's my opinion. If we wait till 2016 and we go with the improvements, that between now and then, we do something in a temporary basis to at least help address the situation.
It's a good idea, we will explore that.
All right, so I have a motion, a second, including all these issues that have come up, to have staff start working on those. Any other discussion? Mr. McAdonick?
If I can just follow on the mayor's comments, I think for those items that we brought up, I think we do need to look at what of those might make sense in the near term, because again, you can't hardly see our facility at night, so if there are, within reason, I think it's, we would be asking staff to look at what of those might be reasonable to accomplish, because that is a long way away. You're talking a year, year and a half, and that's time that we need to be building that business and putting a good face forward.
Temporary lighting doesn't take that long.
Yeah, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Any other additional council administrative business? Mr. McAdonick?
We discussed in our study session two weeks, our last study session, a little bit about the educational committee, the educational, what are we calling it, commission, right? And one of the things that I made a comment on is, we didn't necessarily have a charter or a charge for what that was gonna look, work, or feel like, to really know how to put our energies behind it. Thinking about some of the discussions that I participated in with our, during our legislative dinner again, and some discussions that I had subsequent to that, both with Mr. Whitmore and with folks from 27J, I kinda had this moment where it clicked. Neither of our school districts have great depth of resources in terms of their ability to lobby or pursue legislative changes that impact the school district. But selfishly, as a community, we need to see them succeed for our community to succeed, and we have two school districts that have very unique circumstances that could greatly benefit from some legislative assistance. We have done great things in terms of developing our legislative subcommittee and our work on that front, and my thought is, see if council would be up or on board with looking at how we may plug in matters of concern of our school districts to our legislative subcommittee into our lobbying focus, because, you know, as an example, 27J, with its rate of growth and its unfavorable position at the bottom of the funding heap, there are apparently a couple of items that have come up previously that haven't had great support that we could have helped with, one of which is the ability for our school districts to impose an impact fee because of their special growth concerns, right? Today, the district can only levy a property tax. Apparently, there has been an attempt at several, or at least two points that I'm aware of, to put forward an impact fee that would allow districts to help catch up or fill that gap. So either way, I would like to put the idea out there that we consider how we might work with our school districts, and maybe it's a matter of the education commission reaching out to our districts to understand what their legislative concerns and needs are, that we could bring back, and the legislative committee could look at those, and we could potentially, you know, consider taking on positions of support or advocacy for those. So I'd be open to comments from council on that, see if that makes any sense.
You know, I think that's a good idea, and I brought it up our last legislative session, that any items that the school districts have that we can help carry the message, but I think that that can be expanded upon. And tonight, I did see Superintendent Sanchez here from 14, and I had the chance to talk to him. As soon as we get past the holidays after the first of the year, me and him are gonna go to lunch, and we're gonna talk about starting to create this opportunity that we need to work together and collaborate. I'd like to do the same with the Superintendent Fiddler, Dr. Fiddler. So, and those are things that we can have the staff organize, but I just wanted to get through the holidays before we went full-blown on it. Mr. Douglas?
Yeah, I just wanna make a comment on that, yeah, that's, I know that I was 14, looking at hiring a lobbyist, and I'm not sure 27J has one, but that would be something that they could also get on board, take that to the state, because that's something greatly needed, so.
Anyone else? Council McCarthy?
Jason, I think it sounds really good. I would like to expand on that, though. I still would like to see us as an entire council regularly meet with their entire board and have these types of discussions, because I think that's a great idea, but I think we could even maybe expand upon that, so, thank you.
I have one that I wanna bring up. After, you know, this last couple of weeks has been extremely taxing, I've been to about a hundred events, but at some of these events, one of them being the park dedication, groundbreaking, and the other being at Buffalo Run for the Christmas program on Saturday, and me and Rick and JD both got to talk to one of our full-time seasonal employees, and it's just, you know, it's really hard to talk to a full-time seasonal employee and have them say, would you please work on something, you know, I've got a six-month-old kid and I don't have insurance, but I work full-time for the city in a seasonal fashion. And JD mentioned something to me about, we are probably one of the largest employers in the city, and people look and take from us of how we do business, and I'd really like to work towards taking care of those employees that are full-time seasonals. I mean, if they're putting in the hours of a full-time employee over the years, it's just, and maybe it's unintentional, but it's had this appearance that it's easier to deal with from the fact that they're seasonal, and we can work this on a seasonal perspective so that we don't have to pay benefits, but on the other hand, I think that we need to set the example, and if we have employees that are working, and one of the other things is, the school districts, they have full-time people that only work 10 months a year, nine months a year, and I just wanna make sure that we're the example, and we're not leaving, you know, we as a council have to set that example, we're not leaving any of our employees behind, and it's heartbreaking, especially at the holidays, to actually talk to employees that are here in the middle, late December as seasonals that have no benefits. And I'd really like to have the staff look at how we can restructure and rebuild our relationship with our own employees from the standpoint of making sure that we're relationship with our own employees from the standpoint of making sure that we're taking care of those who are taking care of us. Mr. McBroom?
Couple of quick comments on that note. I know we've done some quick analysis of how many part-time and seasonal employees the city has and what the cost would be to provide primarily medical insurance to those folks, and I believe we provided that information in advance of the 15 budget process, but we can dust that off, freshen that information up, because that'll be the key challenge, is the expense associated with providing those benefits. That's one comment. The other is that we are required to fully comply with the Affordable Care Act beginning on January 1st. So we have analyzed all those part-time and seasonal folks, and I just learned today, it's somewhere between eight and 11 employees that because of the hours they're working over the course of the year will qualify for benefits under the Affordable Care Act. Some short number of those will be receiving benefits beginning January 1st, so we'll include that in this updated analysis, but that'll be the challenge for the rest of those seasonal folks, would be the, would be the cost to provide those benefits.
Well, and I know this council's had this discussion in the past. This isn't the first time that we've had this discussion, but we've never resolved it. And if it's an item that needs to be dealt with at the winter retreat, so be it, but I think we ought to at least get to a point where we as council members, when we are in that situation, have a responsible, respective answer to an employee when we're discussing why they don't have benefits and they're working full-time. And I don't want seasonal to, because they have that title, to cut them out of opportunity to make sure that they can take care of their family, too.
One other suggestion, when you are in those situations, it doesn't hurt to suggest that they contact Kathy Blakeman. Let's make sure we have accurate information about the hours they're working. The analysis that we've done to ensure compliance with the Affordable Care Act is based on payroll data, but Kathy would be able to provide a better answer as to why they are not receiving benefits or what a possibility there is that they would receive benefits under the Affordable Care Act. The employee you were speaking with could be one of those, that's one of these eight to 11 folks that's going to benefit.
Yeah, and I, so I think you guys understand my point. I know that there's ways that we can move titles around and adjust hours to offset having to provide, but I would rather be the bigger person and make sure that we're providing for those who are doing the work. And I just want to make sure that our employees, all of them, feel that they're being treated fair, and it's not the seasonal part of their title that cuts them out of opportunity. JD?
Yes, I fully agree with the mayor, and I know many of you know that this has been an item I've brought up many times. I know it's a costly adventure, but truly, I would like to see what it is, in writing, what is seasonal? What is a seasonal employee? Because when I meet with employees in this city, they tell me they work 10 months and that they're considered seasonal. In my mind, that is not seasonal to me. So, you know, we probably need to see what definition of part-time is, what definition of seasonal is. And the mayor's right, it is very difficult when you're sitting there talking to your own employees and telling them about the CHIP program and all these other programs. We are, if not the largest, we're probably the second-largest employer in the city, and we need to set examples for other employers. And I know it's going to take a lot of looking into and how you readjust if we're not going to do this seasonal employee thing anymore, and there probably is a need for a true seasonal employee, but to me, true seasonal means months, not the majority of the year. And like I have pointed out, either the largest or the second-to-the-largest employer in this city is school districts. School districts know how to do this, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. You can go learn how, because the majority of their employees do not work 12 months a year. But yes, the mayor is correct that it is something that I think that we definitely should look at, and like I said, it was very hard talking to an employee and, like I said, and informing them of the insurance programs that are out there for children when they can't get it through their employer or their wages aren't high enough, but thank you.
And maybe there's an easy way to deal with this. We're bringing on a new water park and three new parks. I know that the staff is probably going to increase within the department anyway, and if they're good seasonals, they'll have the opportunity to apply for those jobs and maybe become full-time, and it'll help alleviate some of those. But as we hire new seasonals, I just want to be conscious of it. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, yeah, that's been my struggle the last two years. I've been asking about that as part of our budget last year and this year, and it's still, as we continue to go into 2015, that constant struggle with health insurance with our part-time employees and what's considered to be part-time and seasonal, and I know it was a large number, and now I hear tonight it's eight or 12. So we really need to hone in exactly what that looks like. And just to make it, not change the subject, but just an update, too, on the rail air hose line on 112th. If we can have an update next week, at the beginning of the year, or if you have one.
We'll have to check with Union Pacific and get an update on that project. One quick clarification, I mentioned somewhere between eight and 11 employees will be receiving medical insurance as a result of the Affordable Care Act. We certainly have way more seasonal employees than those eight to 11. It's those eight to 11 that will automatically qualify and we will be obligated to provide them medical insurance. So we will exclude that from this updated information that we provide. The issue here is, how many of those additional seasonal employees would you like to provide those benefits to? And then what's the cost associated with that? Just a quick clarification.
And on the air line for the UP, that was installed that day, the day that they had planned to install it, it's been installed. I've seen them use it a couple of times. The downside is, is that I think we need to have staff reach out to them because lately, they've been parking trains across 112th again and not taking the time to break the trains even though the air is there. And living right down the street, it's had a major impact on us. Again, over the last couple of weeks, they've been negligent about busting those trains. So if staff could just simply get ahold of the UP and say, "Hey, you know, we've got the airline in place, everything's good, still having train problems." All right? Any other administrative business? You have one, Mr. McBroom? Or Mr. Hayes?
Thank you, mayor and council. Two weeks ago, we talked about the use of a facilitator for the retreat coming up in January. Unfortunately, the written material did not get into your city manager reports tonight, but we did do some research on what we paid Ms. Erickson back in January, February of 2013, and it came out to around $4,500. And so I was questioning that a little bit, but that actually included several hours of interviews, one-on-one with each of you, as we were leading up to the 2K discussion. And so we're estimating that the cost of a facilitator would probably be $3,000 or less for Friday night and all day Saturday, plus the prep work that she or he would need to do ahead of time, as well as the post-meeting reporting. So we're requesting if it's acceptable to go ahead and proceed with hiring a facilitator for that retreat, and if you want a place that do not exceed amount, that would be fine as well. I will let you know that we have received four proposals based on our procurement for a facilitator, and so we've not opened those yet, but we'll be looking at those this week as well.
All right. Is there a motion by the council to allow the staff to spend up to $3,000 or whatever cap the motion maker would like to make? Mr. McAdonie?
I would move that council authorize staff to pursue securing a facilitator for our retreat. I'm hesitant to include the $3,000 number specifically in the motion. I would like to give staff some latitude depending on what they get back in terms of proposals, but within a reasonable range of that estimate, I think, would make sense. So...
Is there a second? Second. All right. I had Mr. Benson seconded at first, it just, he didn't have his microphone on. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion is carried. Do you have anything else? All right. Mr. Boett?
Yes, I was looking at the city manager's report, and it is transportation issue that we had with the Northeast Transportation Connection, and NADA, the organization approved a $6,000 due increase to its members. Is that $6,000 increase to each member? Or is that a $6,000 increase to all the members split over that whole $6,000?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem and council, at the NADA meeting last Thursday, there were three different motions that were included on the agenda, one of which was to fund NADA, which is the, if you will, our lobbying organization, if you will, made up of all the counties, or the county, as well as the cities within the county. They had requested that the dues were increased to $6,000. Those be per community. Then there was a second motion, which was to fund the Transportation Management Organization, also known as Smart Commute Metro North, and that was also a request for $6,000. The NADA staff will be providing administrative services to the TMO, and so that was yet a third motion. The chair of the meeting elected to combine those into one motion, and it was passed unanimously, and unfortunately, that put a $12,000 total burden then on each of the member jurisdictions, essentially requiring us to join, not only continue our membership in NADA, but join the TMO as well.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I mean, before my head explodes out, before my head explodes out here, it's just like Mr. McAdonie said, we can discuss this in a study session, and, but I'm going to take a deep breath and just leave it because we need to discuss this further before we agreed to pay that kind of money. Okay, I'll drop it now.
All right. Any further administrative business? Sing nudge? We'll go into reports. Mr. McBroom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very quickly, this week's edition of the city manager report does include an update on streetlight repairs on 104th Avenue. We've got an update regarding the Parkway Market. There was some erroneous information that the Parkway Market was for sale. Our most recent information indicates that it is not on the market. We have an update on some speed humps that are going to be installed on Olive Street, an update on our victim services program, which is now being done in partnership with the city of Brighton, an update on some repairs that were necessary to Kearney Street that some of you are aware of. We do have an update on public Wi-Fi at the Bison Grill that went live on Friday, and then a brief update on the matter that we were just discussing, just discussing, that also includes a request to join a similar organization growing out of the Stapleton Transportation Management Association. Our suggestion was to put both of these items, the Stapleton, the Northeast Transportation Connections request and the NADA request, on the study session agenda for January 12th. Talk about the nature of both organizations, pros and cons about the city joining one or both, costs associated with each. So we will tell both folks that we're not at a point to make a decision. We'd like the city council to review both on January 12th and then take action at an upcoming regular meeting. So that's the city council update. As always, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions? All right, Bob?
The only thing I want to report is I had a vacation last week, and I'm back hard at it as of today, and as usual, when a person's gone, there's a backlog, but I'm working on it. And this week, we do have mediation with DIA on Wednesday, and on Thursday, I have another mediation involving one of our tax cases, so it's a full week in my office, but everything's under control otherwise.
All right, thank you. Mr. McBroom?
Sorry, one quick additional item. I will be out of town next week, headed with my family back to Michigan to see extended family, so I'll send a note out at the end of the week. Mr. Hayes will be here in town and will serve as the acting city manager.
All right, I'm going to touch on some of the highlights. There was just a lot going on the last couple of weeks. I met with the Turnberry second graders and talked to them about government, Rotary a couple of times during that two-week period. We had the groundbreaking at Fontera Park, which city staff and Parks Department did a great job, by the way. I met with Ben Frye on his sale of the site for the new light rail station and relocation site, and I passed that information on to the Economic Development Department. Hopefully, they'll engage in discussion so that things can move forward. Employee Christmas party, again, it was really great to visit with many of the employees and to participate. It was a fun event this year, surely a lot better than the mystery theater thing, just saying. You can put that two cents into the committee that does the Christmas party, much better than mystery theater. I met with Bob Fleming, who's a client here in the city that apparently is going to be coming forward with some issues with a property off 104th for expansion of a recycling facility. Tree lighting at City Hall, I'd like to say that it was great from the aspect that everything looks really good. I actually had people complaining to me about Aurora's lights at their City Hall and said, "How well, how good ours looked." I'm going to use that on Wednesday against Steve Hogan if I need to, but we have a one-up on Aurora there. The refuge roundup suggests that everybody, at some point in time during your tenure, get out to the refuge and watch the roundup. Very, very impressive. The corral system was actually put together, I can't think of the lady's name. She was an autistic person that was at CU or CSU. Yeah, the famous professor that wrote the book on how to keep animals, keep the stress down on animals, especially wild animals like the bison are, to flow through this corral system. Very educational, very interesting. Recommend that everybody go out. But what they essentially do is they bring all of the bison in. They actually have a skid steer that has a big front on the front of it and wings that come out, and they use it to kind of force the animals to the direction they want them to go. Once they get them into the corral, and they use that to get them into the, no, the aisleways to get them through the chute system. They have some kind of a transponder in the back of their, behind their ear, and they wave this wand. It tells them what bison it is, what the genetic makeup is, everything else you want to know about it. They take tissue samples, the blood samples, everything else. And as they go through this corral system, they get to certain spots on the babies, they can determine based on the genetics, if that baby's going to be moved and go to another location, whether it's in Idaho or South Dakota or Wyoming, to be with another herd of genetically pure bison. And they do that, and all the other facilities do it, so that these babies kind of get moved around so that genetically, we can keep those bison as healthy as possible. They give them their inoculations, and of course, the babies get... get the little thing in behind their ears so that they can keep track of them. But they have these pans where, as the animals get too stressed out, they pull them off the side and they let them sit and calm down. But after being around cattle and livestock my whole life, it was really an interesting process to see. You actually get to go up and over the top of the catwalk that's above the chutes and everything, and watch how they handle these bison. And they don't allow a lot of people to go out and do it, you know, so it's a select few. But I just would implore all of you to go out and see. It's some of those things that most people don't know what goes on out at that refuge. And if they did, there's some pretty interesting things that happen. So, I just would say, go do that. Crystal?
I just wanted to refer it's Dr. Temple Grandin who you're referring to.
Yeah, that's it. Then we had, let's see here, Rotary again. We had the grand opening of First Choice Emergency Facility up on 104th. Legislative reception and dinner went very well. Thank you to the staff that organized that. They did a good job. Derby Winter Fest went over. Spent some time with my friend Guillermo back there. We held down the fort at least for the first hour and a half. Got to sit on Santa's lap. Had some people were concerned I was going to break Santa. That didn't happen. But I did get to tell him what I wanted for Christmas. And then the Christmas reception at Buffalo Run on Saturday. It was a good event. Seemed like there was more participation than there has been in the past. A lot of people were happy about it. But again, I think there's this separation of how do we get the information to the people? I did talk to Guillermo about that at the Winter Fest, saying, "Hey, tomorrow's the thing at the golf course. You know, people with kids should come out and enjoy the activities." There was one lady, I guess, that showed up at the golf course to pick up a gift certificate. And she was like, "Hey, what's going on here?" Staff then told her, "This is what's going on." She said, "How much does it cost?" She said, "No, it's free." She went back home and got her kids and came back. But, and I know, and we all preach it, and I know we try to get the information out there. It's on our website, it's in our newspaper. We just have to, I really think we have to use technology and start getting more aggressive with social media and the internet to help try to relate to some of our folks in this community. There are some people that don't have internet, and I know that doesn't reach them. But I think communication, for some reason, I feel like we're at a loss of being able to get to the message out to the people. And I noticed that again with this particular event. And then, as far as the Derby Winter Fest, I did get up at 7:00 and hook up the trailer and hauled some trees. And I want to thank NYX Garden Center, who provides the trees. Of course, they're purchased by businesses to give away to the community. This year, I was a little frustrated because we're only doing 40 trees. And normally, I would haul 150 for that event. And once the gentleman at NYX, Richards is his name, he said, "I had my coat on that said, 'Mayor.' And he said, 'Are you the mayor?' And I said, 'Yeah.'" He said, "Is this something the city does? Parks Department, everything else?" And I said, "No, we actually, we help, but this is a community enterprise event." And he said, "So, what are you doing?" I said, "I haul the trees every year. It's something that I do to help donate towards the program, and I used to be on the board with Community Enterprise." And he said, "Well, you know, if you can donate your time and help, I'm going to go ahead and turn around and give you 30 more trees. So, go back, unstrap the trees, load up 30 more, and that's my donation." So, 30 more families got trees because NYX donated an additional 30 trees. And I really think that that's important because of what it does for our community. And I would request that the staff send something out to NYX, thanking them for the donation to the community, because that says a lot. And they showed me their award from Aurora, because they have a NYX Garden Center in Aurora. They showed me their award. They were the Small Business of the Year for Aurora, which says a lot, because there's a lot of businesses in Aurora. They're a pretty large city. So, I would at least like to make sure we acknowledge the donation. With that, in my report, I know there's more Derby, the Derby Study that went on. I wasn't able to make it, but I know Renee was there. Renee, Historical Society did the Derby?
Yes, Steve and I were both there. It was a very interesting study that they did, and they gave a full history on Derby. They gave information on Derby that even the Historical Society didn't know. So, it was a very well, and for it being 4:30 in the middle of the afternoon, it was a very well-attended event. It was a key bank in the basement. Then Steve and I left there and went down to the RTD train, where they were showing the new commuter rail trains that they're going to have running on the East Line and the Gold Line and our line in the future. And then, I just wanted to mention also that I went to the photo stream, Sand Creek Regional Greenway, had that photo stream contest on Friday night. And 17 kids, there were a bunch of adults that entered photos, but 17 kids entered photos. And the number one and two winners were from our Boys and Girls Club. So, we took the top two prizes there, and it was really well-attended. And the Boys and Girls Club kids came and found out right then and there that they were the top two winners. So, it was, we have some really talented people. If you see the art in the lobby, that doesn't even include the photographs that people are taking, that we have students that are very well-versed in the art of photography. So, that's just all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. And I have to touch on the Rotary Shoe Program. Renee, I don't know if he's done his families yet. Did you get it done?
Saturday.
Saturday. And I'm getting mine done this week as well. But I think it's important that we thank Rotary. And Renee and I both serve on Commerce City Rotary Club. But every year, they take care of hundreds of families with young kids within District 14 that otherwise wouldn't have shoes for the year. And we take, and we each get so many families we have to take care of. And then we spend time at Walmart, meeting and greeting those families, and then shopping with the kids of those families to make sure that they have the shoes they picked out and a couple pair of socks, so that they get something. And Rotary does a great job of doing this, it's called the Heart and Soul Program, to make sure that the kids in our community that wouldn't otherwise have shoes, get shoes, and they fit in well at school so that they're not wearing old shoes and that they feel a part of and not poor and less than others within the school program. So, it's really a great program. And it's just this time of year, that it's that, what Christmas is about is trying to take care of other people and give back. And I mentioned to you guys the Salvation Army family that we've taken on. And if you would like to participate, what I'll do is I'll just send you out an email blast to the city council with the information on the family, who they are, the kids' ages, and what they've actually asked for. I'm going to go out and do the shopping, but I really think it would feel good if we could put Commerce City City Council on their gifts. So, with that said, I want to wish all the staff, all of the residents, and this city council a Merry Christmas and spend time with your family. Councilwoman Carson, you have something to add? I'm done. I've talked enough. Yep?
I'll be short. I just wanted to say that Saturday up at Buffalo Run, there was a comment that was made to me that I just want to share. And people were very happy it was up there. And I had a woman come up and say to me, "This is that community thing that we miss here." Thank you so much. So, you know, when you're standing in line to visit Santa and you're talking to the neighbors and the kids are talking to each other, it went a long ways, I will say. So, thank you. And once again, staff went out of their way to make it great. And then I'll just finish by wishing everybody a happy and healthy holiday.
Okay, Councilwoman Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just again, I want to extend my warmest season greetings to all residents and staff. It's been a heck of a year with all the projects going on, so I want to just take this time to be, I guess, reflective, if you will, of all the things that we've done. And, but just to cherish what's most important in our lives right now is helping others, helping those who can't help themselves and can never possibly repay you. That's my motto this year. And so, I want to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Feliz Navidad, and Happy New Year to all. And have a safe holiday and safe travels for those of you that are traveling out of state.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I'd like to also thank the residents this year for giving us the opportunity to serve and wish everybody a nice Christmas. The staff for doing a great job this year. And all the cards and guests from the city council, I appreciate that very much. Like, we've all had our say this year. I appreciate everybody's input and going to 2015 together. And let's just keep going forward and making good things happen. So, happy, maybe Merry Christmas. Happy New Year.
All right. I know I saw your light, was your light blinking?
No, but it, yes.
I saw it blinking a minute ago, and I just didn't want to pass you up.
Thank you. I just, real quickly, will echo the sentiments of those that have spoken so far. My best wishes to the community. I was sad not to make it to either of the events this weekend. And unfortunately, the Derby Winter Fest in particular, that's such a fantastic event. And so, it's great to hear how things turned out. And obviously, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for making that happen. I don't know that words can really serve to thank staff, in particular, for all that they've done this year. We have thrown a lot your way, in addition to all those curveballs that none of us anticipate. I know the entire staff is obviously not here, but please take the thanks of myself and my family and those that I've talked to in the community who have sent their warm wishes. And I wish you all a fantastic holiday. Travel safe for those of you that are heading somewhere. And I'll echo Mr. Douglas's comments. I look forward to locking arms with the nine of us in the coming year. I think we've got a lot of good still to do, and we'd love to see the momentum continue. So, all the best.
Great. And I'm ready to close the meeting out, but I'd like to, on behalf of the city council of Commerce City, wish all of the residents of Commerce City a Merry Christmas and a happy, prosperous New Year. And God bless you and your families. Be no further business to come before the city council. Word adjourned. Now, we're going to give the clerk a moment to switch over.